Clockwork session for the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners on Wednesday, February twenty second. Uh, just a reminder to everybody who is either listening online or thank you for being here in the courtroom. Uh, our work sessions are for information purposes only. Um, we don't take any action from our work sessions. We also don't. Uh, do any public comment at our work sessions. Um, if you do have public comment, you're welcome to join us at our five thirty business meeting. And today, we have an update from the Heritage Conservation Council, HCC, and we're glad to welcome our guests. If you could each take a minute and just introduce yourselves, that would be great. Yeah.
Uh, thank you so much for having us. I'm Jenny Tricano Mueller. I'm the current Chair of the HCC.
My name is Patty Beatles and I am the Natural Committee Chair.
And my name's Nick Pumprey and I'm currently the Vice Chair of the HCC.
Excellent. And I think Jill is getting the presentation loaded. In the meantime, Commissioner Willie's going to perform a small song. No, I'm just kidding. Something to entertain us with. Okay, we're ready to go.
Um, well, while that's loading, our agenda for today is to just give you a little bit of an overview of the HCC. I know Patrick, you were here last year at our session, but Karen, you're new to the commission and Shannon, you weren't able to make our session last year. So just kind of give you a brief overview of what we do and who we are. And then we did a strategic plan process this year, so we wanted to share an update on what came of that and the direction that we're heading and get your thoughts on um where we can have the most impact on some of the things the county is doing, like open space, Plan twenty forty, um, just the general direction of the county and how we can best put our council to use for the county's overall goals. Um, and then we wanted to talk through a little bit about possibly expanding the council as we take on some of these heftier projects like work with open space and then just have a discussion. Does that work? Okay, great. Um, so the background is that in twenty ten, the Board of County Commissioners authorized the creation of the Natural and Cultural Heritage Task Force, which morphed into HCC the following year. Um, and it was established to promote the conservation of the county's natural and cultural heritage resources to honor our past, enrich our present and inspire our future. So we're a little bit of a unique organization in that we're doing both natural conservation work and cultural conservation work. And when those two things dovetail, um, projects that touch both. And I think that's happening more. In twenty fourteen, our last coordinator, Jan Schuber Eric, um, well, I assume she was the one who led us to become a CLG or a designated certified local government, um, which is a national park service designation for governments that work towards conservation projects. Next slide. Thanks. So this is who we are. Um, in the packet, I sent our bios, so I won't go through that, but we're really excited to announce that Caitlin Amerlin will start as our new coordinator on the county staff, I believe on the twenty seventh. Is that? Yeah, okay, that. And so, um, I'm personally very excited to have somebody in that role again. Um, and we as a, a council are excited about the work and the skills she brings from Grassland Heritage Foundation. Next slide. Okay, um, so this fall, we got together with Coneflower Consulting and they facilitated a strategic planning process for us. We were doing a lot of different things and some felt like they maybe weren't taking full advantage of our expertise as a council. So they helped guide us through a process to figure out where can we have the most impact in the county, um, if we're trying to preserve our resources for the future. And the four things we landed on were encouraging conservation, um, with a lens of sustainable development, serving through advising. So we had been doing a lot of projects where we were the doers, leading a preservation conference, leading the barn program. Um, but we really think our role as a diverse set of experts from the county is more to provide input to projects like open space or to the zoning team, um, lend our expertise where we can to the county's work, but step back a bit from doing some of the work. The third goal is uplifting partner organizations. Um, I know we talked about this a little bit last time, Patrick, that we're almost like the extension agents of the county. We're connecting people and connecting them to resources and connecting them to each other so that they can harness their collective power and their collective resources and move forward. And then the last one is encouraging accessibility and that one is broad. The picture is of Wells Overlook and the ADA accessible lookout over there. But I think we're thinking about inclusivity also, um, in that accessibility. What does cultural heritage look like from a variety of different perspectives, um, non tangible types of culture? We've traditionally preserved a lot of structures. What does it look like for groups that maybe don't have a structural legacy in the county? Um, and then accessibility in terms of open space. Here are the major programs we work on. The Natural and Cultural Grant Program obviously is probably the biggest one. Um, we have, as you know, two hundred thousand dollars to give out to projects throughout the county, plus another seventy five thousand through ARPA funding for open space projects for this year. Um, we take the lead on surveys and the real preservation plan and Nick can talk a little bit about some of that work later on. And then Patty has been, um, leading a landmark tour and I'll give her space in a minute here to talk about just what we're doing to highlight different, help people become more aware of the cool things that are on around the county. Patty, do you want to talk about the landmark tour a bit? Great.
So, um, starting in November of twenty twenty one, which feels kind of like a lifetime ago now, um, Jan Schubert Eric and the HCC began coordinating a landmark tour in collaboration with Freedom's Frontier. They, of course, had done the Great Douglas County History Hunt, um, and a Santa Fe Trails Tour. And so we landed on doing a natural landmark tour in the county that highlights our, um, our natural heritage. And so in December of twenty twenty one, we had our first stakeholder meeting. Um, we thought a lot about, you know, geographic diversity and ecological diversity being included in this app because of course here in the county, we have some really remarkable prairies, but also wetlands and, um, viewscapes and forests even. Um, and so we ended with seventeen sites for a tour and each of those sites were sponsored by the organization who stewards the land or, um, someone who is involved directly with, um, each site. And we were prepared to launch in May or June of last year. Caitlin Stanley, who was our coordinator, um, had some community conversations with Dr. Dan Wildcat and, uh, Bridget Chapin at Haskell um, about some other heritage work, but the tour was brought up and we had not initially invited any site um, at Haskell Indian Nations University to be included. Um, we had, they had come up on our, um, initial kind of planning list, but then we weren't really sure who should we reach out to? And we really dropped the ball in terms of inclusivity, um, of our sponsors. And so through these con- um, conversations that Caitlin Stanley had with Dan and Bridget, we decided to take an intentional pause in the planning of the tour to work on the DEI side of our, of our presentation of the natural landmarks in the county. And so, fast forward, we, um, it took a little bit of time to kind of get to where we needed to be, but we did send an email to all of our sponsors explaining our pause and encouraging them to reflect in their own data that they had provided for us. Um, kind of, who are they representing? Did we talk at all about, um, pre-colonial, um, settlement and, um, and now, just last week, we've gotten to where the HCC has approved funding to hire a DEI consultant to lead us through the rest of this process to launch. We do still hope to launch this year in May or June. Things have really come together pretty beautifully, um, in terms of it does sound like Haskell would like to be included in the tour. Um, that, sorry, the Haskell Wetlands and, um, yeah, so, so we're gaining traction and our DEI consultant, who's Alex Kimball-Williams, will help guide us, um, in our next steps to launch. So that was a lot, um, there, but I think we're making good progress.
Thanks, Patty. I think that's helpful. Um, some of the other things we're working on, the barn program, that's when we're, we're looking at more, how can we catalyze barn preservation without necessarily taking the lead on that work? Same for the preservation conference. We're in talks with La Compton to see if they might be willing to host that and, um, take a bigger lead in organizing it, of course, with some port, some support for us. Historic res- register nominations, we have a couple of people on the council who are great at helping um, people, county residents with those if they need assistance. And then lately, and Nick can talk a little bit about this, is advisory work with zoning.
Yeah, uh, lately, uh, we have been doing a little more advisory work than when I initially joined the council, which actually wasn't too long ago either, but, um, about a year ago, we didn't do as much of this advisory work. And then I think this was something that Caitlin Stanley really was pushing. Uh, and so in, in recent times, we've had different discussions with zoning about uh, potential historic and natural, uh, areas that, um, may need protecting or something that they need to be aware of. So for example, uh, there were discussions when we talked about maybe what, when west, sort of the western, northwestern part of Lawrence, they're talking about an expansion westward there. Uh, some emails came to me through Caitlin and zoning about discussions about, well, how does this impact the Oregon Trail? And so I was able to send the maps and different, um, sort of, uh, site markers of where potential ruts were for the Oregon Trail, where the sensitive sites. Uh, and the discussion with the wind farms, uh, out, uh, in sort of the globe area, we've had discussions uh, with Roger, who's on the committee, Roger Boyd, uh, he's an ornithologist. We talked about what bird species might be impacted by this. Uh, we talked about the Santa Fe Trail again, going through the area, and I was even able to, to help, um, zoning get different layers for GIS to look at where the, the, uh, national parks had the trail going through the area, which oddly enough might be a little different than what the map zoning had. Um, so there's a little dispute going on there, which is kind of fun for me. So, uh, it, it has been very rewarding and it's, it's definitely a part of the committee that I, I really like having these conversations with, sort of doing different advisory work. So we're hoping to do more of this in, in the future. Oh, and I'm on, I don't have to turn it off, even though I'm just going to slide it to Patty. Uh, so yeah, one of the other, other things that we've, we've been doing, which, um, Jenny mentioned is trying to help any way we can with open space. Uh, and we're doing this really in three different ways, uh, with the ARPA grants. And then I'll, I'll talk a little bit in a minute with, with what we're planning on doing with our archaeological survey. But also one of the main ways that we're connected with open space is that Patty, one of our board members, uh, is, is our sort of liaison or representative on the open space committee. So I didn't know if Patty wanted to talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So I know we had a work session just, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, but yeah, I'm serving as a liaison to the open space plan, um, and enjoying that work. Of course, you all have a pretty good idea that we're having biweekly meetings with Logan Simpson and working on particularly a community engagement plan, events for the spring and summer, and then logistical things like a mailer and a logo and all of that. Um, yeah, I don't know that I have a whole lot else. Um, yeah.
I mean, one of the, the main things, especially that I'm concerned with, which we'll, we'll talk about with the archaeology stuff is how can we, from the HCC's point of view, sort of help with any sort of cultural or tangible or intangible sort of ideas or things that might, might be, um, that the open space committee might need to know. Um, one of the other things that we're doing, of course, is that we're going to facilitate the ARPA grants. So when our grant season comes back, which you'll see the timeline in the next slide, uh, we are going to have grants that are specifically targeted towards open space. Uh, and I think it's upwards to seventy five thousand dollars. So specifically, anyone who has projects that might uh, go along the lines of the open space mission, that kind of thing, we're going to, um, basically hear those, those grants as well as the other grants that we're already, um, looking at. Uh, and then, of course, like I said, the archaeological survey. One of the main things, um, that we've, we've been talking about this again, since, since I started the council a little over a year ago. Uh, the last archaeological survey that was done in the county was in the nineties. Uh, and so, uh, what has happened is that archaeologists who've done work in, in the county have listed sites all over the county. But there's never been a comprehensive report of all of those and people have limited access to that. In fact, unless you're an archaeologist, um, or somehow connected to, to Chippewa or government agencies, you don't have access to that GIS site. Um, and as a result, there are hundreds, actually, there's about three hundred sites throughout Douglas County, some of which are in our rural areas. And so, uh, if we do this updated, more archaeological survey, not only are we going to gather those in sort of a report, but also we're potentially going to add more to the list, which I think will be useful information, if not extremely useful information for open space with the planning and the rural preservation plans and all of that. Uh, especially when thinking about expansion of these urban areas. Um, the majority of our archaeological sites are not in our urban areas. They're in the out, sort of out in the county, uh, especially in the globe area. So, um, thinking about this planning and preservation of the areas, I think this archaeological survey is going to help quite a bit for that.
I was gonna, um, also, Nick, maybe spend a minute talking a little bit more about who has access once that, that survey's done how, who has access to it and how it can be used. Um, because I think, um, Commissioner Kelly, I think he had some questions when we, when we talked about, um, pulling the funding out of the, uh, the reserve fund for this, to do this survey, um, a couple of months ago and, you know, there were some questions around, is this the best use of our resources? Um, and so how, how are those? How's the survey used? Um, and all that good stuff.
Well, this is a good question and I don't have a good answer for it. Um, to be honest, uh, I envision multiple reports. I have a feeling there's going to be a report that's going to be sensitive, that not everyone will have access to it. Uh, because the whole point of it is to preserve those archaeological sites. This is completely tangential, but, uh, Douglas County and Kansas in general has a lot of treasure hunters. And so the point of limiting these locations, uh, is to keep basically those sites preserved. Just yesterday, I saw someone literally in a church parking lot digging holes uh, in the church in Lone Star, the German Brethren Church. Um, that person was later told to leave the property. They didn't have permission. I saw someone at Bloomington last week with the metal detector. So we have a lot of treasure hunters around here. So the idea of keeping that, like, survey limited is to protect those sites.
And it's also not a guarantee that those sites, that it would be used to protect sites either. It's that delicate balance.
Right, exactly. So my thought, uh, really is that there's probably going to be a report that in general has a list of sites and where they're located in the sense of maybe townships, which I actually have already prepared some of that stuff for the HCC to see before because I have access to it as an archaeologist. Um, so like, like I said, I can tell you that there's like a hundred sites in Globe. So that's probably what one of the, 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 um, reports are probably going to say something along the lines of, you know, there's two hundred sites in, in Globe. There's three in Marion Township or something like that. Uh, and then the other, the other thought, and this is something we discussed with Chippewa, and that's what we're going to have to have more conversations with Chippewa about this is who else in the county can have access to it? Uh, with our conversations with Bob Hoard, who was the state archaeologist who's now retired, he was all for zoning, having access to it. But I don't know if that was actually the case or if it still is the case for zoning to have access to it. So I, I think there's some, some questions that we have to answer. And if zoning doesn't have access, they could always, they could always reach out to us, which I think we've, we've done a few times. Did I, did I answer that, Jill?
You did, yeah, thank you.
I would like to follow up on that a little bit. I'm afraid my microphone may not like that. Um, so in terms of wanting to have the study to preserve sites, the study is to know about the sites, keeping it semi-private is to preserve the sites, but that the actual preservation of it would be very helpful if that got to who needed to know in terms of development. And in my seven years of experience, that I don't, have never seen that happen. At, at least it's not coming to the, the public sphere for discussion for a development purposes. So six years on the planning commission and, and watching a lot of meetings here, I've never seen archaeological sites flagged as something that needed to be considered for preservation for either a development or a land split or a house site or any of those things. So how, how is it intended to be used? Because we have sensitive data like this from biological survey also, like somebody knows where all of our, um, you know, best prairies are, uh, but that information does not get to where it needs to be in terms of how do you make decisions on preserving it? So I think that there were, uh, native prairie sites that were probably destroyed during my time on the planning commission because that information was never brought forward. So it's heartbreaking to, to know that somebody knows and because we're not crossing those lines, we're not actually preserving. So how do we, how do we get there?
I hear you loud and clear. And this was, this has always been a problem that, that we've had, I think, in, in Kansas because it's state law. Like it is, it's state law that people can't have access to it. However, I think there's differences in the sensitivity, uh, and a lot of that has to do with indigenous sites. So I can tell you where the Santa Fe Trail ruts are. They're all registered archaeological sites. We have uh, four different ruts identified that are all listed as an archaeological site. No one has a problem with that. But I can also, well, I'm not going to tell you, but I know where there are Native American burial sites, uh, in Douglas County. And, and that's, I think, part of the sensitivity. And I, I think there, there are ways to get around that. Um, maybe like I said, with different reports and, and somehow having public discussion. The other thing with the survey is kind of like our previous surveys. They're going to, whoever gets this, you know, contract, they're going to have to talk to landowners. Uh, and so there is going to be discussion within county and there should be public meetings and there'll be more of a discussion about that. Now, whether the results go out to the public, I, I don't know. Um, and other than doing sort of the advisory with the zoning discussions, I, I, I don't know how it's going to work. I have hopes.
So I certainly appreciate the sensitivity and why and all of that. Uh, will there be, you mentioned having conversations with landowners because of course you have to get land access. Is information that is found on the land also granted back to that landowner or is that also considered proprietary?
Basically, the way it works in Kansas is if it's on your property, it's yours. So unless it's, um, connected to Native American burials or some specific Native American ceremonial, uh, artifacts, um, it, it technically is yours. So, uh, landowners should be made aware of, of what is on their property.
Similar protections for other burials? So I can think of one very large radio tower that is on top of a very young baby's grave in my family here in Douglas County. So are there?
Oh, yeah, there's.
Protections?
Yeah, there, just, just in general, Kansas has a, uh, burial act. So burials are always the, the, the like red line. That's nothing crosses, you know, when we get to burials. Um, I mean, there, there can be some leeway, but for the most part, yeah, you, you're not supposed to be able to disturb burials and you you know, if you've identified the site, as long as it's not Native American, most people are made aware of those.
I didn't want to take y'all down a tangent. I just knew that was something that came up a couple of months ago and I know it's going to resume, it's going to continue proceed. And I wanted to make sure we had a chance to have subject matter experts talk about it. So thanks.
Um, and tell me if I'm wrong here, but it seems like it's a good opportunity for the HCCs to step in as an advisory role with a landowner to explain what that archaeological site means, you know, if it means introducing them to those who find specific meaning around it, you know, because you're right, it is that landowner's property, right? And I think it, it's nice to have an organization that can have that conversation with that landowner, bring people together to understand how some may perceive the value differently. And I think that's really what we're trying to do is educate folks about what it is. That in some instances, they may make their own decision about that land, but at least zoning knew, at least the landowner knew and possibly, um, to a certain degree, um, you know, those, those groups who may be interested in that know as well. Does that sound about right about what you're thinking? Okay.
And already tell you, just like we have pushed back with people trying to register or not register their historic properties, we've already, I mean, I've already encountered people in the county who were pushed back against their sites being registered. Um, even though I tell them it's your property, you, you know, it's your, it's your property. It belongs to you. They still don't want to be registered on the state's GIS website. They may not even want the site to be recorded. Uh, a gentleman came to me and said he basically had a almost intact, um, stoneware jar from the Oregon Trail. He has an Oregon Trail crossing in his property. He didn't want anyone to know about it because he thought they were going to come and take his, his stuff. Uh, and he refuses to register the site. Um, and I'm like, we don't care about your stuff. We just, we just want to know exactly where things came, came through. As an archaeologist, I just want the story. I don't want the stuff. But yeah, we, we've already gotten pushed back. And so it, it's my hope that we can educate people that you know, what's, what's the point in all this? It's not necessarily your, your treasures.
Yeah, I don't know what the limitations are on, um, the archaeological maps, but I would envision us providing the county with data on where the sensitive ecological and cultural sites are so that when you're developing open space, you can prioritize, okay, these areas are high priority for protection. And these areas that don't have some of these sites, maybe those are ones that, that would be good spots to encourage development. Um, but striking that balance between protection and development, I think would be a good use of the data that we provide. Um, but I think that might be more the role of zoning to aggregate and prioritize the work for the county, in my opinion.
And I think that's an excellent role for your board as experts across cultural and ecological, uh, topics to help the community prioritize what areas, because we do have to grow and we do have to provide more housing for people. Um, but how do we decide what to give up? Because it is, it's, it's always a loss. So what do we decide how to prioritize, um, our ecological treasures and cultural treasures and also still grow as a community? And it's, it's hard. And so any kind of guidance you can give there is very helpful.
I debated on saying one more thing. I don't know if I should or not. Um, oh, why not? Uh, I mean, the, the other thing about archaeology as well that people often don't think about is that in a lot of cases, especially with Kansas, an archaeological site could be five arrowheads. And, um, in, in some, in a lot of cases, actually, when, when an archaeological site is found, it's almost always destroyed. And, um, even in the process of excavating, you, you kind of destroy it. Uh, and so in, in some cases, especially with the survey, there, there might be sites that are long gone that have long been excavated in the nineteen seventies by who knows what KU professor and it's gone. And we could develop there too. And so that's another part of the survey, and this was actually Bob Hoard's idea is we need to also think with the survey of what's still there and what, what can be developed, basically. So, um, the ne- the next slide that we have here, uh, of course, is our, our timeline. of what we're hoping to go. You know, next, uh, and a lot of this was actually dependent on hiring our new Caitlin. Uh, and so, um, we're hoping some of this stuff will, will pick up soon. So of course our, our first thing that we're, we're working on is we're losing two council members. So Roger Boyd um, and Lindsay Crick is stepping down or they're both, they are stepping down. And so we're already thinking right now about recruiting new members. Uh, we've been actively having discussions about this. One of our biggest concerns is right now we are very Lawrence heavy. And Roger was one of our only Baldwin people. Uh, and so we are, we are currently trying to recruit and we might even open up, um, recruitment to sort of even a more public discussion as opposed to in the past where we were just like pick who we thought our replacement should be. Uh, and so that's kind of where we are now is where we're looking at, at recruiting new people as well as potentially expanding the council, which will of course also include recruiting new people.
Yes, that was one of the questions that I was going to flag in terms of the workload that you, uh, take on, how much of that is within the cities in Douglas County? And how much is outside of the cities in Douglas County? And then what's the representation on the board? So that was a question I was going to follow up with, but maybe you can give me a little bit more.
Well, right, right now. I mean, technically I have a Lawrence address, but I'm, I'm in Lone Star and Roger's in Baldwin. Everyone else is in Lawrence. Uh, how many council members do we have? Six, seven? So, so essentially two people are not Lawrence and then everybody else is, is in Lawrence. But when it comes to our workload, oh gosh, we're, we try to be as balanced as possible. And especially with programs like the barn program and the various surveys that we were doing, and we're currently doing a survey of downtown Baldwin. Um, we try to be as countywide as possible. When we look at our grants, we look how many of these are coming from outside of Lawrence? How many of these are coming from Lawrence? So we, we try to be as balanced, uh, as possible, which is kind of part of the reason why we were looking at La Compton also to do the next, um, the next, uh, preservation conference, even though we're, we're kind of moving away from us doing it ourselves. Um, there was already discussion even in the second one of either Udora or La Compton to try to, to spread out and do, do a little more countywide. So we try, but now we need to recruit some non-Laurence people. Um, the other thing, obviously we're still working on open space plan and the landmark tour. We're, we're doing those things. Um, the Jenny mentioned with the barn survey, we, um, we're trying to move away a little bit of being more hands-on with, with different, uh, work, like especially like the barn work. And there's some other projects that we're also trying to sort of a, a little bit of move away from. Uh, one of the other things that we're dealing with, with the barn survey is our, our person who, um, did all the consultation work for us is moving away from actually doing it. Uh, and so that was causing a little bit of a hiccup as well. So, um, it, we might have to do a little revision of what's going on with the barn surveys and, and how much we actually participate. It also takes a lot of time. Uh, the last, so we, the last survey, we didn't visit all the barns, but the one before we did, and we visited like 12 barns. It took several, several hours to drive all over the county to look at these different barns. Uh, and we carpool, but still it was a lot of, it was a lot of carbon footprint going on there. Uh, and we're trying to maybe step back a little bit. Plus some of the barn owners thought we came, we looked at their barn. Uh, we hired someone to, to give them evaluation and then they said, what's next? Uh, and so we're possibly looking at more of a education on the what's next part as, as opposed to us actually going and seeing and looking and that kind of thing. Um, obviously I mentioned the archaeological program or the archaeological survey that, uh, we're, we're planning on getting together as soon as Caitlin, uh, basically gets acclimated. Uh, Caitlin Stanley and I worked together on writing the RFP for this. It was way more Caitlin Stanley than it was me, but, um, basically what I'm hoping to do is when I get back from my tr- soon to go on trip, um, I'm going to sit down with the new Caitlin and say, this is what we're looking for. And we're going to kick off the, uh, the archaeological survey, uh, as soon as possible. Um, we're also, uh, you know, still hoping to help with all the other, uh, heritage groups in the area and try to help them whichever way we can. Um, and then of course our last few things. Um, we're also still working with sort of the natural and cultural grant program, which again was put on hold. At least pushed back a little bit while we were hiring our new coordinator. Uh, and then the HP, uh, HPF grants are also sort of, you know, in a weird space as well that we're going to have to try to figure out, uh, for our next basically grant season.
What are the HPF grants? I'm very, uh, knowledgeable about your natural cultural grants, but what's the other one?
So the HPF grants, um, I was hoping you weren't going to ask because I'm going to blank on the acronym Heritage Preservation Fund. Did I get it? Uh, and basically, uh, kind of like the barn program, what would happen is that at the end of the year, SHPO would say, we have so much money. Here's HPF grants. People can apply for these and we would apply for them. And then basically coordinate those monies to go somewhere else to help someone else do something. So maybe Santa Fe Trail wanted to, you know, help build their, um, you know, new, uh, walking path or, um, you know, maybe La Compton needed something. So we would apply for the grant, get the money and then, you know, help another organization do it. Well, I think it was the last year we were essentially told that we no longer could do that. We couldn't be this sort of, it was almost like we were subleasing. Uh, and that was a little odd. And so, um, we're sort of waiting because Katrina and Shippo also is, seems to be a little confused about why or why not? We can't do this. So we're we're, we're trying to figure this out. Um, but as of now, our sort of thinking is like I said, similar to the barn program, maybe it is better for us instead to say, hey, Santa Fe Trail, you should apply for this money. You know, hey, you know, Douglas County, county, you apply for this money. Or, um, Udora, you apply for this money or, you know, some other group and we help them, but we don't actually get the money and sort of give it out. Is that it? It seemed a little weird.
I think offering that technical support would be very helpful because those can be complicated to, to apply for. And then it creates barriers between who has the time and ability to, um, to go for that funding and who doesn't.
Yeah. And that's another thing that we've talked about with our, our natural and cultural grant as well, that we get a lot of repeat grantees who know what they're doing and just can slam dunk it, walk in and, and you know, here's our new project, give us money. And we've also talked about like, well, maybe we should also help with some of the other groups who are applying and who've never done it before and try to offer assistance as well. So I mean, it'd be, it'd be sort of a similar idea too. So yeah, that's, that's pretty much what we've got, I think, going this year. Uh, and then the last thing that, um, we are kind of hoping to talk to you about is, is trying to expand the council as well. Again, one of the main reasons why we're thinking of this is for diversifying the council, not only from the point of view of location. Um, so not just Lawrence heavy, but also from the point of view of maybe different perspectives from maybe a DEI point of view. Uh, and also just expertise. Uh, so right now we have an ornithologist, an archaeologist, a public historian, uh, an architect, a lawyer, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of people connected to the natural history or, or the, you know, natural world, I guess you could say, sorry. I'm blanking on words. Ecology, there we go. Um, so, um, you know, we could also be thinking of someone in the muse, museum world, someone, um, and maybe even just from outside of this, who's also interested in sort of preservation. Um, we have a lot of what I would call local historians who aren't trained in history, who've been doing this work forever. Uh, who would be excellent on, on a council like this to give a perspective outside of sort of the academic world. Uh, and an actual experience on the ground, been doing this for 20 years kind of thing. Uh, and so we were, we were thinking about expansion from that point of view. Uh, so we were hoping to, to get more people on the council for that multiplicity of, of perspective. Uh, and to, like we said earlier, to hope like when we do have grants, when we do have, um, other projects, someone is thinking of not just Lawrence and not just the white European perspective, uh, and trying to expand sort of some of these ideas. Yes, anything?
Compelled to say, um, it is a struggle for us to fill lots of boards. Um, so I think that's something and, and we've got lots of boards that would like to have additional perspectives added to them. And we are struggling to find people that want to dedicate the time or provide service in that way. So, um, I, you know, I just, and before you get too specialized in how you make your appointments, I, I would just suggest that maybe we have some staff level conversations with you all about how not to make your life more difficult in the future. Um, because we've been through that with other boards that have gotten very, very specific and what that slot needs to fill, and then they can't fill it. Um, cause there's the five people in town who've done that and they've all served. Cause we also have term limits currently. So I just would, and you know, I, I appreciate the desire and the impetus, but be, be careful what you wish for. So let's just talk through it.
I think we're hoping actually to go a bit broader and look at more people with lived experience and, um, not so much like we have to have an architect and an attorney in it. Um, but maybe somebody who represents Udora or somebody who like Nick said, is more of a hobbyist. Um, so I do a lot of recruiting in my professional life and I hear you. It is hard. Uh, and I'm hoping that if we can lighten the work per person, it might be more available to somebody like I have, um, a seven-year-old. And so this is a lot on me. Um, if we could spread it out a little more, I think it would be more possible for more people to do it.
Just make sure you talk into that mic so our folks on Zoom can hear you. I, I appreciate it. It does, um, something that sort of hit me as you were talking about doing less, but yet doing an archaeological survey and a barn survey and a landmark tour. And so I think it's it's sort of finding that balance of, cause I do believe that your role being more advisory and less doing makes sense. And if you can use those granting opportunities to you know, really focus on the goals that have been identified through your strategic plan for HCC. Then, then maybe the people who are doing are those who are being granted to do it. And then maybe they can be future members, uh, of the council, you know? So I appreciate what Sarah's saying because we see that a lot, you know, we have a lot of openings and and I really want to encourage you to think broadly about it. And, and one question I had, I don't know if we're ready for questions, if you're done with your presentation. Okay. One question I had is, and you, you sort of answered this is when you think about is there a way to lay your inclusion and diversity and equity work over just your thinking, rather than putting people into boxes, right? Because you'll never have enough boxes for all the diversity that you would like. Make that training a regular part of being on the council and thinking about that as you think about future members, because you could do the same thing without giving them names. Does that, you know, and just being very thoughtful about it. And I think that helps again in the overall work. So have you put any thought into that? Is that?
Um, this is where I miss Caitlin Stanley. She was really great at baking that. And we did a diversity article every meeting and had a little discussion about it every meeting. And so I think we have varying levels of experience with diversity work on the council. Um, that is definitely a priority for us. And I think that's a good, good approach.
Yeah. And having diverse experiences with diversity is, is not surprising, right? That, that's normal. And I really wanted to just note some appreciation for, for your thoughtfulness and your reflectiveness and you're willing to pause on the landmark tour. And really engage with others to talk about it. Cause it's easy to plow ahead. And it's hard, especially if you have sponsors and supporters who are expecting certain things. And that you reached out to them to not only share why, but challenge them to think a little bit about it. Um, and I just want to applaud you for that. Um, I'm sure that was a bit of a vulnerable place to say that. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Of course, you already know that some of our stories are easy to find and easy to capture. And some of our stories are much harder to, and some of our difficult stories are harder to capture. Um, so being open to, to those conversations is, is pretty critical for the, the job that you do. And I'm glad to hear that. Um, I know that not just in Douglas County, but kind of overall for historic, uh, conversations, we tended to prioritize place. And I think there, I know Caitlin was especially moving towards like story and people as being kind of the center of that work. How do you, how do you make that balance between, you know, place versus story? And then how do you kind of select what stories to go after? Because the, the harder ones take more time and yet they are valuable and need to be told.
Well, I can start and then I'll ask, um, Nick and Patty to weigh in, but I am surprised every year at the grant applications we get, there's just so many different stories that I'm new to Kansas. I moved here six years ago for a job. Um, so many things come forward that I had no idea about. And so I don't know that it's exactly our role to find those stories, but more to get out into the community and say, hey, we have resources to help you communities within Douglas County elevate your own stories. Does that help? Anything you want to add?
I, I would so, I'm also not a native Kansan. I'm from Georgia. Uh, and, um, from a very, very rural place in Georgia. I was actually surprised at how much the HCC spends time on dealing, you know, kind of going back to what we were talking about earlier, dealing with the rural community. I mean, we have done a lot working, working in the rural areas. And I, I see especially with the archaeological survey and open space, this is going to be a, a big discussion, uh, again. And I think part of that is not necessarily focusing on, oh, we're, we're dealing in this specific place, but what, you know, Douglas County, what is your story? What is everybody's story in Douglas County? It's a lot more well-rounded than I was actually expecting when I got on the council.
Add one thing too. I think we've gotten a lot better in the last year at, is my mic open? Like, like that. Okay.
There we go.
Yeah. We've gotten a lot better in the last year when we get grants saying, we've told the story of the Santa Fe Trail or of, um, the kind of civil war history from this perspective in Lawrence lot, but we haven't told the story that's so most Lawrence, which is um, represents, they did, they applied for a grant to celebrate the day of the dead. And then I forget what the spring festival is called, but um, in North Lawrence, getting the Mexican community together to celebrate some traditional festivities there. Um, so I think we're doing a better job there. We have a ways to go.
Yeah, I feel also like the way that we retroactively highlight grants that we have funded, um, is a really important piece of that puzzle as well. Some portions of the community that have enough story that they can then organize and come forward to ask for more of their story to be told. Then we have some, you know, groups in Lawrence or, or communities that, that don't have that that level of, of investment in themselves yet in order to tell that story. Those are the ones I'm talking about. How do we go out and find them? And I think a lot of our indigenous story is just y- yet to be told. And yet there's, there was so much here, um, but harder to capture, harder to take it because it was kind of overlaid for so long. So I, I think some of those it will be intentional, like going out to, uh, root out whose story have we not heard at all yet?
Yeah, we are, um, careful to give several smaller grants to organizations that don't have as much capacity to hopefully help kind of boost them and get them ready so that maybe in a future year, they could apply for a bigger grant. We also gave a pretty big grant, I don't remember how much, but to an or- organization that was helping Haskell digitize letters between kids who are at the boarding school and their families. Um, so we're touching a lot more communities than I expected.
So Jenny, that was a perfect segue into the thing that's sort of top of mind is, um, you know, on a federal level. Um, there's some real initiative and um legislative support. And then that's sort of trickling down to state and local governments um for identifying sites, boarding school sites um and burial sites associated with those. And so I'm curious in especially and in this past year or so of getting um, to know some folks at Haskell more and pausing that landmark tour. Um, if in that process, there has been some discussion specific to the fact that Haskell is a boarding school initially and that there are both on its current campus and the surrounding area that used to be part of the Haskell land. Um, sites to be um, understood and, and noted. And so I'm just curious if y'all have had those conversations. Um, and also just want to um, echo Commissioner Kelly's comments that I really appreciate that that um, that there was some intentionality with really just taking a step back and engaging a little bit more deeply in those conversations and um, to Commissioner Willie's point just a moment ago, think that specifically with indigenous stories there. Um, you sort of spoke to it a moment ago, Jenny, like acknowledging the stories we've sort of heard and told and retold repeatedly in our, I'm from this community and grew up with a lot of local history um, taught to me throughout life, but only from one perspective. And so I appreciate the, the note about in particular for native stories that there's um, multiple perspectives and multiple stories. There's a multi-layered story to be told about most of these sites. Um, and so being able to recognize um, who we haven't heard from and what the sort of whole story is, even if it's not visible to us um, on its face. So that was a, some commentary loaded in there, but back to the um, sort of boarding school specific initiative, just curious what conversations you all have maybe been having.
I'll let Nick take this in a minute, but none so far. I think we're hoping that the landmark tour will give us um, an opportunity to build a better relationship with Haskell. I don't think the HCC has had a great relationship with Haskell in the past and past. And so I think we're hoping that we can repair this, ask them how we can support them. And maybe one of those projects is elevating some of those stories. I don't, I don't know what they'll say, but Nick or Patty?
Do you want to talk? About talking with Haskell before I talk about archaeology?
Um, let's see. Uh, yeah, I suppose. So I mean, we did, when we paused the landmark tour, I think one thing that comes to my mind, of course, growing up as a Lawrencean um, is the contentious history of the Baker wetlands and the Haskell wetlands and that whole area, the history therein. Um, and one of our pauses, one of the parts of our pauses was getting to meet with Dr. Irene Unger at the Baker wetlands. Um, and so, you know, I think her willingness and openness to have community conversations um is really I'm really optimistic about that. Um, I think this landmark tour could potentially bridge um, bridge some of those conversations. But again, I think listening right now is a really important role for us as we do this DEI work. And I don't want to set my hopes too high in terms of like a solution or a deadline or a, you know, I'm thirty-eight years old and I know a lot of the history and was in high school when the South Lawrence Trafficway was built. But I know also that keeping my eyes set to a solution is um, you know, kind of an ideology that's steeped in white supremacy culture and stepping back from that and knowing that these wounds are much deeper than um, twenty years or fifty years. Um, and that we have to kind of holistically look and listen more importantly than speak.
Before we talk about archaeology, I want to underline what you just said. That was really nicely said. And I think if you approach it that way, you will not have a hard time getting members, right? And I think I'm reflecting on something that many of us went to of a, seems like it's not connected, but it is an equi- an equity ecospace system where we actually went out and, and heard from minority-owned businesses and brought their stories back. Um, now I think we could have had them come tell their stories, but, but I think it was powerful in that we maybe were listening more a- and, and so that we started to build some of those connections in ways that we hadn't. I think we still have a lot of work to do in making, in lowering those barriers so that folks can feel welcome in those spaces. And I think we have a lot of work to do there, but I just want to highlight what you just said, because I think it, it really shows the progress that you're making. So thank you for that.
So one of, one of the things that Caitlin Stanley and I discussed when we were writing this R, RFP, and again, when she was mainly writing this RFP, uh, was would this open any old wounds? Was this going to cause any issues? Um, and of course, we, we had that discussion, but this was, this is Caitlin's expertise. And it again is a shame that she's gone. Uh, because one of her main projects or her main like FOSI, I guess you could say, is indigenous relations in archaeology. Uh, and so she already met with different groups, tribal groups and was discussing um, basically what, how do you want to help? What's your participation? What do you want to see? And so with the, the survey, we are going to um, at least deal with the Osage. They expressed an interest in wanting to, to see the results and to see, see um, basically what, what we were doing. Uh, the various groups didn't necessarily commit to that. Um, on Haskell itself and, and the Baker wetlands. Uh, we one of the things that I worry about, and, and I do work for Baker. I had talked a lot with Irene uh about this. Um, one of the things that we want to avoid is what happened uh with the Shawnee mission. Where the state essentially did not do the work where they asked um, the different tribal groups about what they were doing. They had just initially just decided they were going to do ground penetrating radar and look for things. Um, and so we're, we want we don't want to cause any, you know, old wounds to come out. And we want basically people to want this to happen, I think, before we like investigate for Baker or for Haskell. Um, because it's like I've told Irene, um, you know, finding graves is not necessarily as important. Like proving it from a scientific point of view is not, is not as important. Uh, as, as sort of the story and the meaning of, of what it, you know, what, how, or not even not maybe the meaning in a negative way of what Haskell meant uh as when it was the boarding school. Um, but I, I do think that if it doesn't happen, eventually the federal government will start to investigate. And, and whether or not they should do ground penetrating radar at Baker. I see it happening one day.
Well, and I'll just add that I'm not going to pretend to know a, um, a whole lot about it, but that through um, federal initiatives, through Secretary of the Interior, um, Deb Howland, that there are, that some of that work is already being done. I'm pretty confident that one of the Haskell faculty members is serving on that federal national advisory board. So I believe that there is likely already some pretty deep conversations going on within the Haskell community and campus about what that participation with the federal initiative looks like. So I just want to um, ensure that we have awareness of that and are in a position to support in any way and make sure that um, any relevant information that they are gathering, um, that they want to be a part of, um, sort of any of these surveys is um, and, and that we're able to lend support for any of that actual tangible activity that they may decide they want to move forward with. So I appreciate the insight.
Yeah, the um, the survey itself is really supposed to be dedicated in pre-colonial sites. But we just knew that it, it was potentially just people talking about it. It could be, could be, you know, sensitive in nature. So we, we were hoping that to avoid any issues. But if, if anyone, like if we need to be, you know, part of that liaison to help if, like you said, if it's coming soon. Um, I think we would love to help any way as possible.
All right, we've reached five o'clock, Jenny. Did you have anything else that you wanted to get out of the commission?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if there's anything we can better do to serve the county or um, in terms of the population, the commission, the staff, any suggestions you have for us?
Can you send us a copy of your strategic plan? Is it finished? Or is it still in progress? I'm excited. Excellent. Thank you.
I, I'll just say that I responded to, you asked great questions and we interviewed with your strategic plan person and, and that was really helpful and um, gave a lot of feedback through, through that system. Um, thanks for that opportunity. I, I do think you will play a big role in the open space conversation and I'm glad that you have representation on there. I, I will just say I, I'm impressed with the conversations that you're having here today. And, and I think that, that shows a, a lot of progress. I will always encourage you to bring folks into your conversations that maybe don't agree with the work that you're doing. And that's when we talk about landowners and developers, I think that's very important because it's, it's easy to surround ourselves with people who agree with us. And it's harder to um, be open to a different perspective um, when we're thinking about uh conservation and um, what that means for someone else's land. And so I know you're doing that and I, and I appreciate that. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting.